Are we live?
He's good.
I think I'm on. Good evening and welcome to the April 6, 2021 Northern Lebanon School District Committee Meeting. I now call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you for joining us virtually this evening. Are we still good? Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us virtually this evening. Please know that all webinar community member participants will remain on mute during the meeting unless they have put in a request to speak during the public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening via email or online form. Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Gray.
Here.
Erdman. Fowler. Marlo.
Here.
Murray.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
The Kelly. Nam.
Here.
Bucks.
Here.
Director Erdman, absent all other members are present.
Kirk, I believe that Director Erdman was going to try to join via Zoom. I don't know if he's on there anywhere or not. Okay, maybe he'll pop in later. All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is a presentation by Crabtree, Roarbot, and Associates, giving us an update on the building project. I believe we have Scott Cousins with us tonight and maybe others.
Yeah, thanks. Good to see everybody. I have Tony McGaro. He's, he works with me alongside me on this project and we're going to be showing you some fun and exciting things on the interior tonight. So he's going to help with that. Tony, do you want to pull up the presentation for this evening? So we're going to give an update on the elementary school project and the status of where we're at there. We're going to touch on the athletic improvements. And then we're going to finish up, as I mentioned, looking at some of the interior design of the building, which is getting into a 3D model and looking at some fun, exciting things. So if you want to go two slides ahead there. So as we talked last time, we're kind of moving into that construction document phase where a lot of the major decisions for the elementary project kind of had been made. And we're kind of focusing on reaching that end goal of finalizing our construction documents and going out to bid. We're still on pace to release bids at the end of May. We're anticipating bid release May 31st. And then we'll probably, we'll have about four weeks of bidding period. So we'll have bids due at the end of June for that, for the elementary project. We're still making, you know, finite decisions and still having a lot of meetings with your administrative staff and our consultants and fine tuning the details. But like I said, those big picture decisions kind of have been made. Land development's progressing along and on track. You know, that's one of our, one of the ways we backed into the schedule was around that land development schedule. So we're anticipating approval from Bethel Township in the May-June timeframe. And that align with receipt of our bids. So that's around a good path with approvals. Can you go to the athletic facility? Slide. For the athletic improvements, we changed gears a little bit on how we're approaching the project, meaning we're splitting it into kind of two, a multi-phase approach. We're trying to get the synthetic turf field construct, bid constructed and completed for the fall season, fall sports season. If we were to look at the project as a whole with the field house and all the other work we're doing it, we would have required a full land development submission package. And we wouldn't, from an approval timing standpoint, we wouldn't have been able to hit that fall timeline. However, by breaking the turf field apart in a separate bid package, we're going to try to do that. Now, I'll say, you'll see there's the schedule. We're trying to, you know, use it by fall of 2021. Well, we're looking to bid in April and you'll see one of the things coming on to your agenda for approval on Thursday is to approve the advertisement and release of those bids. So it'll be an April-May timeframe of the bids, but we'll look to start construction at the end of May. I will note that this is contingent upon receiving the approvals in time. So in other words, we're out, we're trying to get the approvals for that field with Bethel Township currently. If we're, if we're at the point where it's time, where we receive bids and it's time for you to approve those bids and we haven't received approvals, then we're going to advise you to reject those bids. Because if you accept them at that time, then, and you'll have your approvals in place, then there's a chance you might not have that field for the fall season. So we'll keep a close eye on that. And like I said, well, we're looking to try to get that, that field online sooner. As for the rest of the scope of work with the athletic improvements, we're finalizing the layout and design of the field house. We're getting a little bit more into the home bleachers and deciding whether to repair, replace them and some of the other bleacher improvements on the visitor side of things. And then we're looking at storage component. I'll talk about those in a second. And that kind of deals with the improvements we're doing to the bleachers and the impact that has on your existing storage facility. So the larger project, we're looking to bid that parallel with the elementary school project. So one of the things we want to do to try to, try to get the, the school district the best, the best pricing possible for both these projects is to look at doing kind of a multi-bit approach for the athletic fields. One is to bid it on its own and, and then also to bid it as, as a combined bid with the elementary school. So we'll actually have two separate bids for that. And when you receive the bids, you're receiving the same time, you'll be able to look at, look at that approach and see what's, which is the most cost effective for the district, whether it's a standalone project or whether it's combined with a larger economy of scale with the elementary school. So any, any questions just on the update of progress to date on either projects?
Yes, Scott, I have a question. This is perhaps unrelated to your presentation, but I was in a discussion with a contractor a couple of weeks ago, general contractor who had mentioned that construction materials cost is through the roof right now. Is that your experience too? Would that, in your understanding, apply to a project or projects of this size?
Yeah, and we're keeping a close eye on that. And it's just, it's just going to be a matter of timing for when, when we go out to bid. To give you an example, some of the things that we're doing to try to adjust that and, and stay within our original, with our latest estimate is like, for instance, copper prices are experiencing, you know, 30% increases over in a month. And, and they're, and they're just going through the roof. So we're doing things like specifying an alternate bid to provide aluminum wires for some of the larger feeds and things like that. We also heard that, that all the steel joist suppliers, so majority of these first and second floor framing is steel joist framing, steel joist bars, that they are booked, all of them are already booked all the way through January of next year. Meaning if you were to bid a project now in place and order, they wouldn't have it until next year. A big factor of that is Amazon, they, and all these warehouses that are being built, they're kind of scarfing up all the, all the joists and all the, all the workload. So we're keeping an eye on those things. We're think, we think we're okay with the joists because by the time we move the earthwork and get the foundations out of ground and things like that, that'll probably align with that timeline of not, not needing them till, till January of next year. But certainly, we are keeping a close eye on the material cost increase. And as we get closer to the bid timeline, we'll, we'll, we'll kind of report back if we think we need to adjust the inflation in our estimate or costs or if the direction from the board is, hey, this is, you know, this is where we want to stay from a budget standpoint. Then we'll look at ways to, once again, build in either deduct alternates that allow you to select things to remove from the project to get back on budget. But, but yeah, we are hearing that, that there's significant material cost increases.
Okay, just as long as we have some decision points in the future where we can identify places where we can make that call, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure, Fadavya and I have been corresponding regularly on that. And I think probably an appropriate time to see where we're at will be a good, a good point would be next month when we're closer to bidding, a month away from bidding. So maybe at the next board meeting, we'll, we'll give a clear report on where we think we're at. Thank you.
Scott, I also have some questions and I hope I can word these correctly because this is not my wheelhouse at all. But I had some conversation with community members that were asking me about the, the, the process of, because that was previous farmland and now it is sitting uncultivated. There may be some change in the, I don't even know, change in the, the possibility of that potentially being wetlands. And can, if you could speak a bit to that, because I didn't know how to answer those questions and, and if that would be a concern and if the timeline of when we're going to, you know, actually be breaking ground and things like that might be bent, there may be a benefit of cultivating that land for one more growing season. I don't, again, I'm probably, I don't know what I'm saying exactly, but those were the questions that were kind of thrown at me. So if I can throw them to you and you can speak to them, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we did do a wetland delineation meeting. Did our civil engineers did an investigation when they surveyed the site to determine if there were any wetlands present. That determination yielded no, no wetlands. But I will definitely bring that up with Chad, with Steck back, the concern of, you know, the fact that the field isn't being grown in and do we have any concerns with that eroding or changing the character of, of the landscape or making it, or, you know, as you say, going towards that wetlands approach. I will say that with our bidding schedule, you know, with going out to bid in June and awarding bids early July, they're going to be out there breaking ground and moving dirt in, in, you know, end of July, early August timeframe. So as far as planting any crops on there between it, I, like I said, I, let me get back with, let me talk to our civil engineer and get his thoughts on it. But I don't think, you know, with that short duration, I think, I don't think one season's going to do it harm. But let me, let me get back to you, the board, on that question.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, so let's go dive in a little bit deeper with the athletic improvements. It's been a while since we kind of showed you where we're at with the progress of, of, of the design. So to orient yourself, of course, the existing tracks on the southeast portion, the stadiums on the, on the southwest, excuse me, southeast is stadium, southwest is a track. And then the north, northwest are the new synthetic turf, turf fields that will, that we're looking to do early this fall. There is a bleacher component with that. We're looking to build that at an 800 seat capacity. There was previous statements about hosting districts and make sure we have that enough capacity. The administration did do a lot of research on that and that's what seating capacity they determined was appropriate. We are keeping that out of the fall bid or this, this early bid package, just to try to make it as simple as possible so we can just get the field work done. So that'll be part of the larger bid package. And then you'll see there in blue, kind of north of the stadium, where we're at with the current field house design. You know, those, you're, those of you who are familiar with the kind of slope and the grading arrangement there, that as you come down that hill, it's a pretty significant change in grade from that parking area down to the existing concessions building. So what we're looking to try to do here as we develop this field house that's now going to be served the entire complex is to develop an entrance kind of up at that upper level entry, upper level area that you would enter high and have kind of this overlook over the stadium and then transition to the, to the elevation of the stadium itself, lower with part of the field house. And we'll look at the, how that looks in the floor plan in a second. And of course, with this, when we're up, when we're upgrading your bleachers and providing these new field house structures, we need to also upgrade the parking to see there a proposed reconfiguration of the parking area. That'll provide the ADA parking spaces. Your current ADA parking spaces aren't compliant just because of how steep, of steep the hill is that they're located on. One of the other pieces that we're, I mentioned, we're looking at with the stadium bleacher, the cost to replace versus repair is very close. It's within $20,000, $20,000, $30,000. The issue gets to be, we have, we have an existing storage structure underneath this, underneath the facility. That is in various stages of disrepair, it needs a new roof. We have all kinds of penetrations or all kinds of issues with it. So if you repair the bleachers in place, you can keep that facility as is and just do the repairs to it. If you were to replace the bleachers, you would have to bring that, that storage building up to code and provide sprinkler protection through it to meet the current code. And of course, you'd probably want to have your structure not penetrate the roof so you don't have those issues. Either way, there's, there's significant cost that needs to be spent towards that, towards that structure. So one of the things that we began to look at was, does it make sense that in the replacement bleacher scenario, to provide a separate metal building, a pre-engineered metal building, that's a cost-effective solution to build separate of that bleacher so you don't have to provide sprinkler protection and, and locate and have it, the inconvenience of it located on the bleachers. So those are the kinds of things that we're evaluating now with the administration and different options for the, for the main athletic improvement project. Let's go over to the floor plan. We'll look a little bit more detail into that. So here is that upper plaza entry area I mentioned before, coming off that parking area into the ticket booth. And you come to upper plaza area. And that is also close to the elevation of the multipurpose field to the west. So, so those spectators and those, and the athletes that'll use that field will also have access to the restroom facilities and the concession and the locker room facilities here. So on the upper plaza area, we have the main men's and women's toilet serving the stadium and the multipurpose field. We have concessions and, and associated support spaces for that concessions building. And then you'll see that upper plaza, we're kind of tearing it down into two tiers to kind of transition that a little smoother to that, to the level of the stadium. And then you'll see the lower portion of that field house, which is at the stadium elevation, contains the team rooms, the training room, the equipment rooms and all the associated spaces that we previously identified in the program. And we've worked out with your administration and your athletic director. Any questions on the field house or athletic facilities improvements?
I had a question. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I just had a question about the, the structure that's under the bleachers now. From, from what I gathered, the new bleachers, I would imagine that might be the route we go. If new compared to repairing is only a $20,000 difference. So I guess my, what I had thought about and what I'd seen at Donegal and at Milton Hershey has this. But the way they're, the way the bleachers are constructed, there's, there's room under there, under the bleachers to put like a building that we have now, not that building obviously, but just the way trusses are built and stuff for the, for the bleachers, you could have space in there. And it's, it would almost be like, my thought would be, when you build a house and you rough in the basement or you rough in the plumbing in the basement to eventually have a shower and, and a toilet. That's not me getting pulled over either, by the way. But anyway, it would be like getting that roughed in and, and maybe year one or two or three, maybe we can't have that building built under the bleachers. But if we, if the bleachers are built with the, built with the proper structure, that eventually there's room under there to build a building. Because right now, the way the room, the building is, the bleachers actually go through the roof in all sorts of places. That's why there's leaking problems. So, you know, I talked to Gary about it before a little bit, how, you know, Donegal and Milton Hershey have theirs. It's just, there's different ways to build bleachers. So I didn't know if that would be something we could talk about as, as a board, if you could get us some ideas. Because what I gather, from what I heard now, you're, we're talking about maybe just building a, a separate structure somewhere. Does that sound right or with this?
Yeah, so. Yeah, Tony, you want to go back a slide? Yeah, and so the, the main reason for that, actually, we did Donegal Stadium. That was one of our, that was a Crabtree project. But the main reason that we were looking to do that is because, just simply from a cost standpoint. When you build it under, under the bleachers, you're going to have to sprinkler. That's, that's a code requirement so that you can protect the people that are using the seats above that. And you do end up having a separate roof structure for, even though you might not penetrate that roof with the, with the structure of the, of the bleachers itself, you will have a separate roof structure. So it ends up being a little more expensive to do it under the bleachers. That doesn't mean we can't approach that. That was the only reason why we looked at the separate metal building storage. But even if you decide not to build under the bleacher now, we can, we can still accommodate the, the design of the, of structure of the, of the bleacher too, so that we space the columns out wider and, and easier to build a building underneath it rather than penetrating the roof like.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's all I was, yep, that's what I was interested in hearing about. So, thank you.
Yep. So, yeah, so if the direction is, yeah, we'd rather not have a separate, and that metal building storage is, think of it like a pre-manufactured building, like a metal, metal siding, things like that. It's a significantly less expensive than to build it under the bleachers. But if the desire of the board is to put it under the bleacher, just from a look and convenience standpoint, we could certainly put together some cost of what it would look like. Okay. Any other questions on the athletic facilities or field house design? All right. So next, we're going to go into the interior design. The PowerPoint contains some still images that you can go back and look at after the fact. But, but we're going to be going through the, kind of the model itself on the, from the interior standpoint, kind of what you saw on the exterior, but a little bit more refined. Before we do so, I kind of wanted just to talk about our design philosophy to let you know how we, we got to the, to the, where we're at now with the interior design. First, we want to take a lot of the, a lot of the features and aspects that we have on the outside of the building and carry that in. So you'll see some of the, some of the blue, you'll see some of the curve forms showing up in some of the ceilings and things like that. We wanted to, once again, maintain that playful, that playfulness, that, that elementary look and make it not, you know, keep, stay away from that institutional look. So you'll see a lot of, you know, two-story high spaces in the commons area and kind of a lot of openness. And, and then one of the other things, you know, we've always talked about this being a larger elementary school. And, and as such, we want to begin to break down and identify areas of the building, meaning like the first and second grade wing. How do you identify that separate from the, from the third and fourth grade wing and so on? And the way we're doing that is with, with color. So you'll see some different color concepts of how we, how we separate those wings. And, and then also bring in the Northern Lebanon, Lebanon blue and yellow. So Tony, you want to bring up the model? So we are standing in the vestibule here now. Off to the right is the main reception area and, and waiting area. So this would be where visitors would come to do their daily transactions. And then of course, on, in the morning and afternoon, the doors would be unlocked and students would go into the building. So we can kind of go in there. And what you're going to be approaching on is, we've always talked about that main common. So this is that kind of main circulation spine that connects you, that connects all three wings. So what you're seeing on the left there is the first, first grading and second grade two-story wing. And then that space that you're looking into from the glass, that's that, that's the collaboration space. So here, we're looking at using yellow to identify this wing. And you'll see in, within that room, you can see some of the curved forms and kind of fun lighting fixtures that we're beginning to look at to, once again, keep this like a playful and inviting space for, for the, for the kids. So that gives you a look into one of those collaboration spaces that, that is at the end of the, end of the classroom wing. And then on the other side of that is the kindergarten wing and that's a one-story entry wing. So we're using a light, lighter green to identify that wing. And as we, you'll see some, you know, this is a, this isn't a final, fine-tuned design level. We're kind of focusing on high-level concepts on the, on the commons here and the, in the main spaces before we kind of take that into the classroom wing. So we want to make sure everybody's comfortable with, with this approach before we kind of go throughout the rest of the building with it. And then you'll see that blue bar, so that blue bar begins to organize on the floor and also on the second floor catwalk, the circulation path that begins to kind of organize and bring that blue in from, from the exterior. And then you'll see the stairs that will get you up and down to, for, for each of the wings will be located at the end of the wings as, in an open concept there. You could see some of the floor patterning we're beginning to look at. So that wing that would have that yellow concept, that yellow concept would be carried through walls and then floors and, and the whole kind of finished palette, so to speak, throughout that whole wing. So you can see an initial concept of maybe bringing that curve once again through, through the floor in these areas. And then if you look to your right, we'll see the, some of the shared spaces. If you recall, the commons spine is kind of our building organization upon which we not only have all the classroom wings, but the gymnasium, the cafeteria, your specials, they're all organized around, around this area. So we're beginning to identify, use some specialized wall material, maybe some wall tile or be a different accent paint to, to identify these areas. So what you see to your right is the art on the first floor. And then up above is that stem piece, so you begin to kind of organize these elements with, with different wall materials. Going down, and then the next wing is the second and third grade wing. So we're looking at using a darker green here. And this is also where we have, instead of a collaboration space, we're using, we're incorporating that learning stair. So this learning stair becomes your kind of large group. You can bring a whole grade level here for, for, you know, if you want to teach a whole grade level of subjects or something, or an assembly or whatever it might be. This is that space, that, that larger gathering space that functions in that, in that manner. And this isn't just used by the second and third grade wing. It'll be used by, of course, all grades that can come, come down here and use this. And once again, you see that curve form happening again in the ceiling that we're bringing in from that curve form, roof form from outside. So once again, that open stair concept to the, to the end of, of that wing to get you up and down and then carrying that pattern down and those colors down through that wing. And as we go further down the commons, of course, in between each of those wings, we're bringing in a lot of, a lot of natural light and a lot of glass. You'll see there, the, we're bringing also, if you look to your left there, Tony, you'll, we're colored glass panels that we're looking to incorporate in the media center on that front elevation. We're, we're bringing in to the, the couple of spots on the interiors tie that, that whole concept together. You can see then on the exterior down on those wings, the blue and yellow glazed brick that we previously looked at. And then off to our right is the gymnasium. So once again, that has that tile on the outside as an identifier. And here's your, and this shows you what it might look like for a performance setup with the stage. So you have your retractable seating in the, in the rear there. You have an opal partition dividing it in the center. So during phys ed class, you can have your two phys ed classes running simultaneously. You can see, once again, bringing in a lot of natural light. These will be translucent glass used for these spaces and also have roller shades to control the, control the sunlight and glare. And then as we make our way down the commons, we're approaching on the left, the fifth and sixth grade wing. We're looking at using a different teal-colored blue for this wing. And you'll see kind of the same, same organization of the collaboration wing from the front, just now identifying it with a different color. And then off to the right, as we go down, is the cafeteria. And of course, we have the double stage opening so that this side of the stage can also be used. We're, we're designing the kind of stage ringing and lighting so that any major performance would be one, would be viewed from the gymnasium side. However, we'll, we'll have lighting and. However, we'll we'll have lighting and appropriate rigging so that if you need to do an evening then, you know, event here from the stage or a daytime assembly or something like that that can be also used from this side. So it gives you really that that multiple flexible uses. You see often distance there, that glazing, once again, another spot we're trying to bring in that blue and yellow glass element and the curved ceilings again.
Scott, I have a question.
Sure.
The the wall or partition that is between the cafeteria and the gym, is that, for lack of a better word, good enough that it will block the sound? So if there's a game going on in the in the gym, they can still be having good conversation in on the cafeteria side?
Yeah. So it is it is an operable partition, meaning it will open and shut because the other the other use that you'll have for that is during the day, coral classes will be will be using that stage. So both sides of the stage will have that that foldable panel partition, and we are specifying it as an acoustic, a higher acoustic rating. So a higher STC rating that gets you better controllability. Is it going to be as good as a solid block, you know, block fill wall? No, but it'll it'll function well enough that, as you said, that if there's a game going on on one side, you're not going to be disturbed on the other side if you're having a conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we can maybe just take a music classrooms or at the end. And once again, there you can see that that wall accent wall element to identify those special classrooms and in the middle. We can kind of walk up to the second floor now and and take a look at what the circulation looks like from up above. So now we're at the sixth grade classroom wing on this level. And of course, we have the the main circulation spine that'll lead you that that also is present on the second floor. So if a sixth grader is going to media center or or another spot towards the front of the building, they can choose either walk along the first floor or along the second floor. And as we walk along here, you'll see that we do have, if you recall, we we're looking to do an alternate bid for a viewing platform that sits above the support spaces in front of the gym. So the as you walk into the gym, you have a series of offices and storage rooms that don't need the extra height ceiling. So we're going to bid as an alternate bid that you have the option to select if the pricing, the pricing is right, to have a viewing platform up here. That also could be used for phys ed, fitness areas, things like that.
How high are those glass rails? Are they glass?
That is a a wire mesh railing. And that is traditional guardrail height that we that Tony helped me out here thirty thirty eight, thirty eight inches high? You're on mute, Tony.
Oh, there we go. Sorry. I'm stuck off. Actually, those are a little bit higher. We have those forty eight off the finish floor. That way, it gives you that little extra protection. Code requirement is actually only forty two inches. So we want the additional six inches to give you a little bit more coverage.
Do they make them higher? A total mom concern, but I just know how kids are. And I am that scares me that kids will clown around and somebody will go over top of that.
Yeah, we hear that a lot on any two story building where you have railings like that. And you'll be surprised to find that, you know, if you if you've looked at any of our image of our of our buildings, you see you see a lot of these railings that that when the kids actually get in here, you that it doesn't, you don't have those issues or problems. Actually, the where we have the bigger issues are in high schools where where kids want to go out and climb on that and shoot a YouTube video or whatever. But we usually don't run across them in the issue in elementary schools. We could certainly raise them higher if it if it makes you feel more comfortable. But forty eight inches, you could, you know, if you take a tape measure, feel what forty eight inches is a typical handrail sits sits down lower at about thirty two inches. So it's about foot and a foot, one foot six high, foot and a half higher than that.
What's the width of the hallway?
The width of the hallway up on the second floor is about eight feet, Tony.
Okay.
Where's the say? Yep.
And for the auditorium area, it shows chairs that would be placed there manually, obviously. Is there contemplated storage space for something like that?
Yep, we have a table and chair storage that's located off of the cafeteria, which has a large space that would house. So they've envisioned there, I think we talked about this before, would be that you would put as your cafeteria tables are out, your your individual chairs are stored in there. And then if you need to, let's say you want to put those chairs into the cafeteria setting and set up that space to have just chairs only, then you would pull the chairs out and then put your cafeteria tables and chairs and stack them in there.
Scott, I keep looking at all those windows and, you know, I wonder if districts that I mean, the natural, I certainly get the natural light and the benefit of the natural light for sure. But I just wonder about our cleaning staff and cleaning all of those windows everywhere. I wonder, yeah, I mean, like, our squeegee budget is going to go up or something.
Well, we haven't heard any complaints from Mason yet, so maybe it didn't click with him yet. But but yeah, you know, that's something that, you know, with a building of this size, you're probably going to end up with a separate with a lift on here anyway, just with with the things you'll need to maintain in the gym and other things like that. So commonly, we see that lift being used. And it's typically a once, once or twice a year process. But but yeah, that's something we can definitely review with Mason and get his thoughts and and view. And we can figure out if you contract with that currently or if you do it internal.
And yes, Scott, you were correct. It's about eight feet wide.
Eight feet, okay. So we're going past the learning stair once again here. And there's some areas where we have little alcoves that we we take advantage of these other, you know, we've always talked about 21st century education and have multiple spaces for kids to learn and do their thing. So we had a little spot like that over there. Here's the STEM STEM classroom. Coming up to the first and second grade wing. And then off to the left is the library. We're still, this is one of the spaces that as we change the exterior design, we're catching up the interior design to it. But we're we're still playing around with things in there with the with the layout and the ceiling. But that kind of gives you a good overview of just the concepts we're looking at. Certainly, you know, as as we said with the exterior, you know, we have thick skin. So if you if you see something you don't like or or, you know, think about things as, you know, once again, those images are in that PowerPoint. So if you want to take more time to look at those still images and digest that a little bit and provide us feedback, we'd certainly appreciate it. So any any questions, thoughts, comments on the interior design?
I just have one question. I think I know the answer to this, but when they first come in the building, is there a second lock system from a little entryway to the reception office?
And I think what, we can go down there and I'll walk you through the locking arrangement and the anticipated kind of daily daily activities while school is in session. So we'll go out to the to the outside and this is just the building only, so we don't have the site here. So we're going to, you're feel like we're floating here. But so as you approach the front doors, there will be kind of a buzzer video phone off to the right of that first door. So you won't be able to get in and it'll be locked there. That will buzz to the reception area. They will be able to see who's there and buzz you in, and you'll be able to get into this vestibule cell. Once you're in here, you can't go any further into the building as well. You are locked, this this is a will have a transaction window to your right, which will have a speak through. And then I'll have a deal tray, which you don't see in here yet, but we're we're incorporate. So if there's like, hey, Johnny forgot his laptop, or Suzie's forgot her lunch, or here's their permission slip or whatever it might be, that business can transaction can happen at this window, and you don't have to let let them into the rest of the building. Let's say if someone's there for an IEP meeting or some other meeting, then they can get buzzed into that door that lets you into the waiting reception area. And then once you go into there, we do one, there's another secure zone. So the door to your left goes to the rest of the office area. That door is secure. That door goes into a conference room to the left. And then the door on the left of that goes into the rest of the building. Those are all secured doors that you'd have to essentially get buzzed into to gain access. So there's kind of a three levels of of security to get through depending on, you know, what what type of access you need to the building.
Thank you.
I just have one question on that, because that doorway there, there is a lot of glasses. Is the glass in that particular area different from the glass in the rest of the building?
That's probably something we want to talk about offline.
Okay.
That that Brad and Gary can can talk with the board about offline.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are you able to take us into one of the classrooms?
Sure. Yeah, from an interior finishes standpoint, they're not, like I said, they're not there yet, but we can at least show you the layouts. Any preference kindergarten first, second?
Doesn't matter.
We'll go down the first grade hallway. And like I said, we're still working through the kind of design of this hallway yet. So don't don't be focused too much on the design, but we can go and look at the layout of the classroom. That's a small group. We'll go into this classroom here. So once again, if you recall from our layout meeting, so this is kind of a flexible furniture arrangement, meaning these are easily reconfigured into groups or into into larger areas. The purchase of the furniture that you see here is kind of a whole separate process that you'll go through while the project's under construction. We, of course, planned for it to make sure we have the spaces sized and designed appropriately. But the contractors, the the contractors from the bid standpoint of the bid project do not provide the furniture in the building. That will be provided under a separate contract further along. But Tony, if you want to go to the right and look back towards the teaching wall. So you'll see on the teaching wall, the technology that that we're going to incorporate is that touch panel, a flat screen, interactive display. Prices of of these types of units are actually less expensive than the projector and smart screen. Prices really come down for this, and this is what we both see commonly. So incorporating that into the front teaching wall with some marker boards on either side. And then if you pan around to the other side, you'll see we do have some fixed casework that'll that'll serve a storage function. But also, if you keep looking to your right a little bit, you'll you'll see the the sink and the storage, storage casework in the front there. And Tony, I believe we're in a small group instruction room. So let's hop over to a classroom. And we'll see a full classroom setting that has the, we got to find one that's laid out. There we go. You'll see the student cubbies to the rear of the classroom there. And then, once again, that front teaching wall. And these are the first and second grade classrooms, which have toilet rooms incorporated, individual toilet rooms. So there's a toilet room as part of that as well. And then, once again, that that sink in the classroom and some storage, built in storage casework. And then we're seeing, I think we talked about before, a lot of movable fixtures and 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 storage solutions that allow you to really be flexible with not only with, you know, with the individual teacher needs, but also on just from a grade level perspective, you know, sixth grade might need something, a little more storage for science kits or something like that than first grade. So you really have the ability to kind of meet the need with that movable furniture. And that can also be used to reconfigure the classroom as well.
Is that one of the courtyards out that that I see out that window?
Yep, that's kind of a pseudo courtyard. It's kind of open at the end. So we talked about where we are fencing that area off. But yeah, this these would would look on to that courtyard there. And one of the things we are developing still, those finite details we're finalizing is the, you know, design that courtyard from a paving and landscaping standpoint. But yeah.
Looks good. Thank you for taking us into a classroom.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other spaces that that we want to take a look at?
Scott, while we have you there, I just wanted to talk briefly about, we're still discussing, there was some concern with teachers about the window in the hallway and and being able to see in the classroom from an intruder standpoint. And, you know, we've talked about that, and there's there's there is some, I think, validity to that. But there's also some validity to the visibility of being able to, a lot of the day to day problems that occur in elementary schools are behind closed doors because there is no visibility. And and I, you know, Brooke and I have talked about some of those, you know, in our discussions. And that day to day visibility of the administration being able to see, or even just other adults being able to see in classrooms, there's some, there's some validity to being able to see in in the room as well. And so, you know, we've we've talked a little bit, Scott, maybe you can maybe you can make sure that I'm saying this correctly. But in your in your experience, it's come down really to user preference. I know we've talked to the principal at Winding Hills, who who had a very strong preference in terms of management of his school, that seeing in way outweighed the the risk from an intruder standpoint. There's also been some discussion about the size of the window. Teachers have talked about some cabinet area there, too. So I just wanted to to point that out to the board. If you have any, you know, feelings about that, you certainly can, you know, can say something now or or speak to me separately. But wanted to just bring that to your attention. That's something we've we've been discussing.
As you bring that up, I I mean, I did have some thought about that just from a distractibility standpoint. I mean, I don't know, like, when somebody comes to the door in an elementary school classroom, just comes to the door, you know, all eyes are on that door. And so I'm just thinking, I mean, hopefully, there's not too much commotion going on in the hallway during a lesson or that sort of thing, but it would add to the distractibility, I would think. Can you speak to that?
I I taught in a classroom that had wall to or a floor to ceiling, pretty much, windows. It had a couple of feet at the bottom, probably about three feet, and then the rest were windows. Honestly, after after a couple of days, the kids were so used to seeing people that I didn't experience that. I know my wife's an Ebenezer. She has a similar situation in terms of windows. I think once you're in and you you get used to seeing people walk by, it I I don't think that that's something that would cause a continued distraction.
Okay, that's good. That's good to hear. That's good to hear.
Can I ask what the teachers, I mean.
The concern is if an intruder came in. Now, I will also say those windows are designed with a it's basically a button. Again, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but you you push it and there's a screen, a blackout screen that comes down immediately so that they, if there were an intruder in the building, you could immediately conceal. Now, they could still shoot or break through the window, you know, but they also can do that at the doorway, too. But that was, I think that was the initial concern.
And I've seen, I've been in a lot of school buildings, especially new construction. I've seen a compromise option, particularly at some of the lower grades where they've shifted the window up slightly so that adults can see in, but kids, when they're standing, cannot see out. And actually, I've seen that done with like adult office spaces, where like they're budding a hallway. And so it's it's high enough that an adult can look in and see a colleague and say, hey, come out. But kids traveling in the hallways can't see the adults in there. So there are some options depending on like what age of kid you have and that keeps you that window so that people can be looking in, doing observations and things like that. So that's another option that I've seen most recently. I did a tour last week and I had a version of that.
Yeah, I would I would agree with that, especially if they have a something that comes down. I mean, I mean, during our Alist, we have windows in the door, but we have paper that we have on the side, and the minute the Alistrell starts, we put it on there so they can't see. And this sounds actually like a better idea than that, because it's an actual thing that comes down. It's not paper. So, good idea.
Yeah, and what you'll hear actually from a lot of the first responders is the, there's a negative connotation to having no visibility in the classrooms. Like, for instance, if you're trying to clear the building or trying to identify what the threat is, and you can't see into some of these classrooms, so there is a desire to have some visibility, like maybe for that side light. But certainly, a lot of the things that we hear you talking about were similar things that other clients we've had have gone through. And when they make the decision to go in this direction, it's those, we, those concerns aren't realized in real life. So that distraction, like, as Dr. Messinger mentioned, the, you know, it's just something you get used to. For instance, we toured with a group of probably 10 people, Winding Creek, and walked through the hallways of all the classrooms and looked into here. And I'd say maybe, you know, maybe one or two kids turned and looked, but then went back to work. It wasn't something that was like this big distraction. It was more something that was commonplace, so.
Is it possible for, I mean, and this doesn't have to be as fancy as the thing that drops down there, but something that we can supply for the doorway windows as well, that goes down like a curtain, that shuts off complete visibility? Because, I mean, you can shut that down, but you can see just as much into the classroom by that door as you can by the window. So maybe that's something that, I don't know if that's a safety discussion that we have in private, but I would like to just see something that we put in there.
Yep, and there's some other solutions that we've explored as well, that that can achieve that same function. So we can talk more about that with the administration. Any other spaces in the building that we want to take a look at? Well.
How large is the superintendent's office?
Well, if you, including or excluding the hot tub?
I was hoping it would be a tent.
No. All right, well, certainly, if you have other comments after the fact, or as you're looking through the still images, certainly relay them along to Dr. Messinger, and he'll get them to us, and we'll make any adjustments. As I mentioned before, we're kind of approaching the finish line, so to speak, of the design and working on getting the documents finalized. So we definitely want to make sure any changes you want to see incorporated, we want to do them now versus having to deal with them during construction.
I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
One, that room that has the elevated stairs, are we being mindful of the sound in that room, so that if we have a speaker in there or if there's instruments in there, that it looks like a lot of not fuzzy surfaces. That's not a great way to describe it, but do we need carpet in there or something like that, or is that already taken care of?
Well, the curved metal panel, even though it looks like a hard surface, that is actually a perforated product that has a, that has acoustical baths on the backside of it. So that kind of takes care of the ceiling plane, so to speak. But certainly, if you're looking to do instruments and other things in there, we might want to consider adding some acoustical wall panels. And then we can always talk carpet as well, if you're really looking to do a lot of louder noise activities in here.
And that kind of reminds me, do we have, we do have a music area, right?
Yes, yep. At the end of the commons, there are two music classrooms that will house your band and music functions. Tony can breeze down there real quick.
I have a question about one more room, the emotional support classroom. Do we have that? Do we have one of those in here?
Yes.
Where is that located in, like, around the classrooms wing?
I believe emotional support, I don't have the floor plan in front of me. I forget exactly which wing it was located in. But it's basically designed as a similar footprint to a general classroom, so that you have the flexibility, we talked before about the flexibility down the road. Should you have increased enrollment or change in your programs, it has the flexibility to adapt to a different classroom. I believe the emotional support was on the first, in the first grade wing.
I think you're right, Scott. I think, because we put the, we want it down close to the office.
Yeah, and it has a sensory room attached to it. First and second, the first grade wing.
I think the reason I'm asking this is because we all remember when there were issues with some of the language that was coming out of the emotional support classroom, when it was at East Hanover, right next door to another classroom. So if you have younger students, like, we're talking acoustics, so I'm thinking acoustics of the emotional support classroom, maybe how well you're going to be able to hear some of what goes on in that classroom, in the classrooms beside it, and outside the windows, I mean, as well, just in general.
Yeah, and one thing that, and we can, there's ways, you know, it is block wall construction, which masks the majority of the sound, but there's ways that we can treat that block to increase the sound performance of it by filling it with grout and other things like that, that we can certainly explore doing for this room. The other thing I'll mention on the window for emotional support, the life skills, and the autistic classrooms, where you might not want every day people to see in and see what's going on there. We do have an additional roller shade that's a privacy shade that can be drawn on those board or windows.
This is perhaps a trivial comment, but I thought I spotted like a teal color green at some point, which to my eye was a lot more pleasing than the, like, olive or lime green, but that's just my two cents.
And we had that comment with the administration as well, that the green we're just going by now maybe needs to be adjusted or relooked at. So we have the kindergarten wing, that's kind of like, almost like a key lime green or something like that. And then we have the fifth and sixth grade wing, that's that more of that teal blue, teal blue look. The challenge gets to be when you have, you already have your blue taking care, taking, your kind of royal blue, so to speak, is your school color, that we want to identify the wings as. Then we have our red brick, that's kind of an orange reddish color that, you know, is going to be kind of conflicting with any reds or oranges, so that kind of limits your colors. But we've heard that the olive green may need to be reinvestigated for another color, so we'll take that. All right, anything else? All right, thanks for your time once again, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, Scott. It's always exciting to see these updates.
Yeah, this is the, yeah, this is kind of the fun part, so to speak. It is.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Yep. Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, next on the agenda is item three, that is our public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening. And I have been informed by Mrs. Martin that we had no requests for public comment today. Item four, the minutes shall note that public notice was given for the meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. Notices and advisements of these meetings will carry the intent that limited business may be conducted on any scheduled meeting date. Next, we move on to our items for discussion that will tendatively be on the consent calendar next week. Items five, Dr. Messinger?
Yep, item five starts out with our first three typical items, approval of minutes, approval of the student activity count, and approval of the cash disbursements.
Questions or comments there? And we move on to item six, that is our budget and finance items.
Yes, several items there. Approve the IU 13 general operating budget proposal. Also approve the GASB 75 valuation related services agreement, our annual independent contractor agreement for speech and language, and also an updated list of drivers employed by DP Fisher.
Are there any questions or comments on those items? Moving on to buildings and grounds.
Yeah, item number seven, we are starting to see some requests for summer camps. The first request is there. I will tell you that PDE has put out guidance for summer camps in terms of a number of kids, and some of the rules that they'd like follow. So Mr. Confer and Dr. Ebert are working on procedures for anyone running summer camps this year, so that we can make sure that we're following PDE's recommendations. But the annual wrestling camp is there for approval.
Questions or comments there? All right, we have several extracurricular items.
Oh, yeah, we have a football staff, both of varsity and a junior high staff, including some volunteers. My understanding, they had their first meeting the other night, and it went well. And we now have a full staff. They want to start working with kids, getting into weight rooms, and doing some spring activities, so those names are there for approval, so that they can begin to work with our kiddos. Under 8.2, we have our musical volunteers that are listed there. We'll be doing Annie in May, and I think they call it Mini Annie, if I'm not mistaken. The cast is limited, but I know Brooke is excited about being able to do something, as well as our kids. And then also, some of the extracurricular staff that gets paid for those positions are there. Also checking into, I don't know that we've, I'm not sure how we've handled it in the past, but we may add an additional name there next time for sets, for the person that's doing the sets this year, and in the future as an additional position, or checking on that, and may even have that as an additional item next week. And that's it for eight.
Any questions or comments there? All right, moving on to item nine, curriculum.
We have two policies in our final adoption for you, and several policies there, tentative adoption, working through the 800s now. As you know, 400s and 500s, we've been retiring as we've been getting through those, and we jumped to the 800s to take care of a few things there. In addition, you have the retirement policies, 335.1, 435.1, 535.1, and then item B, 336.1, 436.1. Another item there, I mentioned it in my email, this is actually this year's calendar. We had added, if you remember, an Act 80 day in September for our elementary staff to get some extra planning time in. We need to make sure that our district calendar reflects that change and is, matches up with what we report to the state. So the revised calendar was there for your approval as well, and that's it for item nine.
Any questions or comments there?
One question regarding policy 802, Dr. Messinger. Could you explain what this is doing? So there's two pieces of it that, I'm never really comfortable with shall approve language, because it takes out any sort of discretion from the board, but I'm also curious who's approving what. So upon approval of the Department of Education, the board will approve the recommendation. So could you just explain this policy?
Could you read me the entire statement?
It says, "Upon approval of the Department of Education, the board will approve the recommendation of the superintendent for the organization of schools in the district."
Give me the context. I'm afraid that we work on these policies a good three, four weeks in advance.
And I'm sorry to spring it on you. I just saw this.
And I can actually get an answer for you for next week before we go on.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine.
But we work on them so far in advance, and we look at so many that, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I believe the old edit showed specific elementary schools, so I think it was referring to how the kids are organized in physical school buildings.
We'll need to do some work with PDE to reorganize, because we are currently in four different elementary schools. And then we will need to do some restructuring, and we currently have sixth grade listed as a middle school, I'm sorry, as a middle school, and they're going to wind up in an elementary school. So we will need to submit for approval of a restructuring with PDE. PDE approves that, then.
I see.
We're doing that in a district right now, so I don't have the policy in front of me, but I suspect the language is shall, because it usually goes as follows. The board establishes the restructured plan. When you know you're going to be closing buildings, and you have various hearings for those, you pass resolutions that describe exactly what you're going to do, what's going to be closed, what's going to be open, and what the realignment will be of any grades. Then you submit that to PDE. Normally, it's a submit slash notice. They technically approve, but for many things that are fairly routine, like you're building a building or you're closing down buildings, it's a, it's sort of like, they just will rubber stamp it, but you have to meet their specific internal deadlines. And Gary will pay attention to that, because it only falls at certain times of the year. So as long as you get those notices out in advance, it basically then comes back to you as approved. So the board does actually act to make those approvals way in advance before you submit to PDE. So if there's any shall on the backend, it's because you did something on the frontend.
That makes sense. Thank you. So this policy 802 will likely change again once we have that structure established, so we would incorporate that in the policy book as to the structure that we have, or would we just leave this policy as?
I don't know if your policy is even that detailed. It might just be about how organization happens, but I'd have to look at it. Gary can speak to it.
Okay.
Yep, we'll take a closer look at that, and I have to be prepared to discuss it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to spring it on you.
No, that's okay.
Any other questions about the curriculum items? Moving on to human relations.
Oh, yeah, we have some classified substitute, classified substitute for you there. The resignation of two of our employees. Want to just mention Carol Kaler, who's retiring, who's been with us. Do we not have that number of years, Pat? She's been a long time. I know she had both of my children, so, but, yeah. And so, celebrating that with her. And then the employment of a custodian, who actually was here with us and left her greener pastures and is coming back, and that's good to see. So glad that we have that employee.
Any questions there? All right, we have several informational items listed at item 10. Is there any new business for discussion this evening?
I just wanted to point out one thing. We do have a lot of organizations that are using the facilities. As more and more travel organizations crop up, you see them asking for requests of facilities. A lot of these organizations do contain Northern London students. Some are mostly Northern London students, some are partially Northern London students. But we have been starting to allow some of them to use facilities. As you remember, board policy talks about profit versus nonprofit, and whether it's board-approved or just informational, nonprofit is informational for us. However, we need to reexamine, and Pat and I have it on our list of things for probably this summer, our fee schedules, and to make sure it aligns with the old policy, which had categories we do not anymore. So we'll have a revised fee schedule for you at some point. I also want to point out, just for the sake of being public about it, Flight Basketball, which I think is a really good up-and-coming organization, has a lot of Northern London kids. That's Mr. Rizzo's organization, and while he only coaches one team, he oversees it, but it is a nonprofit organization as well. But I just wanted to make sure that publicly, you know, we're making sure that we were letting people know that. All right, new business.
All right, thank you for the explanation and the transparency. I believe that we do have an item of new business, but we would like to take a five-minute break before we move into that discussion.
Okay.
I'm glad you reached out to Katie, or Kate, I don't know her.
Okay, under new business, I had one thing and if the board has other things, certainly they can bring them up. But I sent a draft email to the board today. Obviously, we had a real good discussion, I thought, in March where people voiced opinions about the fourth quarter. Had some input from a survey as well. In the meantime, I crafted an email which was sent to the board. And there was some comments about that that I felt needed to be discussed in a public forum. So I would ask that, you know, if you have something to say, that's great. But give everyone an opportunity to at least speak once before we come back around a second time. And if you said your piece, that's fine too. But wanted to get feedback, you know, and kind of where we were, where we were thinking. Obviously, when we talked in March, we were in moderate for a week and it's jumped back up to substantial. There are obviously, we've talked about some guidelines from the state in terms of the attestation form, as long as we're in substantial, that I've shared concerns about. I must admit that I am torn on this topic because there's a part of me, my own son, who is saying to me weekly that when do I get to go back to school all the time? And then there's a part of me that operationally, I believe the state is making it very difficult on schools, despite what they say in the press, to return because of the restrictions. And I've shared with you, you know, some of those downfalls. And we've seen some of that in terms of school closures. But, you know, you're weighing the good versus the bad there and trying to make a decision that is right for your specific district. So I know that some folks had some thoughts on that and wanted to open that up for additional thoughts since our last meeting.
Sure, I'll start. Yeah, so we've had many conversations about this in the last month. And certainly, things have changed even since we talked last. You know, but what I kind of come back to, and I've shared this with some here on the board, that, you know, I believe we have to look at, you know, the risk side of all things. We're all making decisions throughout the day, you know, probably hundreds of them that are risk related. Should we do this? Shouldn't we do this? And this is another one. And there's risks to, on the safety side, some would say. There's risks on the education side. Are we educating them? There's risks on the mental side, you know, mental health side as well. And we're now, you know, a year and something gone from this. And I think, you know, as I have looked through all those, I come back to the fact that I really feel like the best thing for our kids from an education standpoint and from a safety standpoint is to make the attempt to get them back in as many days as possible. So if that's four days, you know, as we, you know, put out a survey and got feedback, then it's four days. And I think it was Mr. Erdman that said, you know, that middle day, if we're still doing the virtual, is critical for teachers. And I would not have thought that, but I appreciated that feedback. So I think a four day move back would make a lot of sense. You know, that being said, you know, there is the risk of we try to do this and we get kicked back out, right? And, you know, there's a couple of reasons why I think now, though, we should make that attempt. And part of that is we have now gone from, you know, being a longer period to be out of school. They've moved that down to two to three days. So I think that risk, if we do get into a situation where we have to, you know, move kids out, is much, much smaller, much more manageable. And quite frankly, today, kids are not in school three days every single week. So if we're able to get them in and get them some weeks where they're in full, I think it's a big win, a big win for us. You know, some of the things that I walked through to say, why should we do it now? And I'll just walk down through, back down through my list from a safety standpoint. Look, all teachers now have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. They were a big risk for us and I believe that's been eliminated. From a community standpoint, which I think was a valid concern, if schools were continuing to work through this and then kids going back out in the community, it's a risk. You know, the sixty-five and older has now had that opportunity. We're going to continue to wear masks here in the school. That is not changing. Our schools are going to continue to do the mitigations that were put in place and quite frankly, I believe have worked. We've had very limited situations where we could point and say, this was spread within the school. Weather's improving, you know, so we're opening windows, getting better ventilation. We are, you know, I wouldn't suggest we get rid of, you know, live streaming or that side of it. I think that still needs to be an option. And families have, you know, they have that option. Our students are still not high risk. Students are having challenges on the mental side. We know students are having challenges on the education side. We have many that have been, you know, in that failing status. And I think administration, teachers, the school have worked really hard to try to make that not a big issue by trying to work them back in. But there are ones that we're not seeing that are struggling or they're getting by. And we'll find out later that they didn't get, they didn't get the foundation. They didn't get the education that perhaps, you know, they needed, but we don't see that today. You know, extracurricular activities, what I see anyways, participation is harder for these kids that are not being brought to school every day. They can't get back and forth to participate in the same way. I've seen it when I've gone to other schools and just see the numbers in general, in general being down. So, you know, those are, those are some of the bigger items. Again, I just, you know, this week, it's, let's not go back for this reason. I feel like if, as we start to kind of push it down the road, there may be the next thing, the next thing. And I do think that, you know, even if we only get back for several weeks here at the end of the year, it does send some hope, a message as we get ready to prepare for next year. Gives us an opportunity as well to kind of see, how do we do this? If we have a similar situation come, you know, come the fall? Or, you know, God forbid, we have another pandemic-like situation. How do we do this? Because I just don't feel like we can fairly educate these kids long-term in this environment. You know, we've seen many kids move to charter or other avenues. And it's costing the district. I mean, it's costing the district, I think, this year where, you know, we think it's probably 1.8 million. And, you know, anecdotally, I hear parents saying, if we're not sure, if we don't see that movement back, I'm starting to make my decisions. And I think as a district, we want, as a board, we want those, these kids to be in this district. We want to educate them. And I feel like the risks are really low right now. It will be difficult to manage, I think, on the administration side if we have to, we have to move back and forth. But I think, you know, Gary, you've done a good job kind of talking that through with the administration. So I feel like, you know, it's doable.
Can I just get a quick question? Just, this isn't my comment, but the six feet to the three feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, if we're substantial, we still have to maintain six feet of separation for lunch or?
You probably shouldn't get me started on this topic because I'm really not happy with the state about it. It has always been six feet or to the greatest extent possible. We have never achieved six feet in every class. Certainly the classes that we can, we do. But there are many classes that we don't, which is why we quarantine kids when there's a positive case. It only applies in moderate or low, the three feet, but it doesn't really change anything, to be honest, because the quarantine distance is still six feet. Regardless of whether or not you can, I can sit three feet from Dr. Buck or Director Buck's, but I'd still have to quarantine if she became positive, if we weren't vaccinated. But, so it doesn't, it doesn't change that at all. I have absolutely no understanding of why we actually did it. I mean, it's great, it gives schools permission to sit within three feet. But in terms of operational, operationally, for me, it makes, it doesn't make a difference. I mean, add anything to that.
Add nothing to close contact tracing that still exists with the six feet. I mean, there are distinguishes, there are distinctions made in the new guidance that came out last week that separates out between grade level and between setting. But there's still very strong requirements, especially as to the attestation for cafeterias. And that is one of the biggest hurdles. Six feet is still in the cafeteria, six feet is still a mandate for any mask break because those are the two times when masks are off and kids are doing things that they wouldn't be doing for the remainder of the day. And that is probably the one area, the cafeteria, where some districts have seen small amounts of identified spread that wasn't from the community when they weren't careful in the cafeteria. So I think that's where some of that guidance came from. It has not been a uniform thing. I'm not going to tell you that every district has had a problem in the cafeteria because they haven't. But that is where one of the focuses is.
Because right now, we have kids eating in classrooms. I know my son eats in a classroom with four other students, I mean, the whole classroom. So there's no, we wouldn't necessarily be able to do that anymore if we brought students back.
I don't though. We have six feet in some classes, but we don't have six feet. And I'm going to guess, it's an estimate, but it's about half and half. I, my daughter was, not to bring her into the, she probably, she's not listening, so I'll talk about it. She would have been quarantined about three weeks ago, two weeks ago, but she made it by one day within the window of time. So she, you know, and there were, there were other kids on that. I mean, we're quarantining kids because in some classes, but it's luck of the draw. You can go from a class in high school of five kids where they're spread out. To the next class, it just so happens that there's a lot of kids that happen to be in A through L or M. So it's completely random because you can't, you can't move in cohorts in high school like you can in elementary school. That's the problem.
But we would lose those classrooms right now where we have less students in them if we were to bring students back full time. So the spread possibility would be higher in those classrooms right now where it's lower because they're able to be six feet apart.
Yes, the answer would be that there would be more classrooms with less than six feet, yes.
I mean, I understand, I'm kind of where you are, Gary, where there's two different, it's just frustrating. There's the parents' point of view, then there's the board looking at what it's like for the teachers, what it will be like for teachers trying to teach a full classroom in person while still maintaining just as well of an education for the hybrid students or the online students because we're still offering those options for parents to have. And administrative, I couldn't imagine trying to, the inconsistencies of even three days off. At least right now, we know what's coming. The teachers know that they're not going to be in a classroom teaching kids on this day. They don't know they're going to be in there this day. I think it's just one of those, what we need and what we want are two different things. And I will take whatever you recommend because you're the person that's right in the middle of this. We're just the ones, we're just the parents and the board members that, you know, hear the grumbles in the community. But it's not the first time we've heard grumbles and it won't be the last. So I would agree with whatever your recommendation for the fourth quarter would be.
Anything else?
Yeah, so I'll speak a little bit. I really appreciate it, but Director Marlowe had. Uh, I, I really appreciated what Director Marlowe had to say. Um, one thing he didn't mention that, that I think about every day when I, when, when, uh, I started thinking about this is the fairness as- aspect of it. Um, there are parents out there that want to send their kids to school but miss the bus. Um, early on, there was an open period for kids to come to school and some parents were smart enough to advocate for their kids. And their kids are coming four or five days a week. You know, we were trying to do the best we could do with the information we have, and to no fault of our own, here we are. Um, but there's a lot of good people out there with their heads down that were just counting us, on us to do the right thing. And now we're three quarters of the way through the year, and their kids that go twice a day are going to school 72 days this year. That's it, 72 days. Marking periods, 45 days. You know, for the fourth, fourth quarter here, we have the opportunity to send these kids that were coming two times a week, 45 more days. And I think as a local government organization, which we are, we have to really consider the fairness of that. You know, that's not fair to the citizen with their head down who didn't, we didn't advertise, you know, what qualifies a kid to come back four or five days a week. We didn't advertise it. How would, how would, you know, John Doe know to call the school and say, you know, I have thi- this problem, does this qualify? They didn't, but here we are. Um, it's cut off, they can't get into school now. But the parents that were smart enough and advocated for their kids, they're here 180 days. And to me, as a local government organization, that's one of our biggest duties is fairness. That's all I got.
Yeah, so I will, I'll jump in. I, um, first of all, to the administration, I would, I would just say, I, I do not envy the situation that you're in at all. And, uh, the situation that we are in as a district and what we have done to these kids, and it's not our fault, but what has happened to these kids is wrong. And I have reached the conclusion that we are in a situation that is brought to us by unelected bureaucrats in Harrisburg and the arbitrary number six. And I am incredibly frustrated by all of that. I have called the Secretary of Health, not personally because they don't answer, but have left, left a voicemail, and I am willing to make whatever calls I need to make. But at this point, I've gotten to the position where I believe that as elected officials, as a board, we need to start at some point to have the courage to say that we need to make a decision for our district. Now, having said all of that, I do not in any way want to risk the administration, the school itself, licenses, there's rumors that are going around, all of these things. I do not want to risk that. And, and I recognize that COVID is real, I recognize that there are unknowns with COVID, but some of the unknowns are known unknowns at this point. And those known unknowns are the impact that this shutdown has had on our senior high school students. I'm not going to get into anecdotes because my family doesn't matter, but anecdotally, I can tell you that our kids are hurting. I think we have lost the senior class. If you talk to seniors at Northern Lebanon and find out what they're doing next year, they don't have a clue, by and large, they do not have a clue. They've lost a year of instruction, they've lost a year of mental and emotional growth, they've lost so much this year as a result of decisions that adults have made to protect this, to protect adults, when these students are at very, very, very little risk, statistically a zero level of risk. And I say all of that to recognize that this is being driven from Harrisburg and is being driven from other places. So I have a number of questions. Who else do I need to call? Who else do we as a board need to call to get these things to change? Do we call our legislators? Do we call the unelected bureaucrats at the agencies that are making these decisions that are forcing us to, to do harmful things to our kids? Who else do I need to call? Because I will get on the phone and I will call them. Um, I, I, I really appreciate the comments that were, that were made. I appreciate Director Sekelik's, um, reference to those that are, that are grumbling in the community. I, I see it more than just grumbling. I think they have a legitimate argument. I think they have a legitimate position to say that my kids need to be in school. Uh, the emotional health of the senior high schoolers and the junior and senior class i- is at a position that we should have never put them in. Suicidal ideation among teens in this country is at an all-time high. These are things that we, I don't think we can any longer risk. If the board needs to make a statement and make a decision that falls on our shoulders to do it, I'm getting close to being at that position right now, but I definitely do not want to overstep the administration. The amount of pressure that you all are under to do something that makes the most sense for the most people in this district is beyond comprehension and difficulty right now. I lose sleep at night thinking about decisions that aren't even mine. So I guess my second and third question, and, and some of this, you know, has come up in, in, in conversations before, but there is so much confusion about this. I'm glad the question of the three foot and six foot came up because, uh, and, and Dr. Messinger, I'm glad that you mentioned, uh, the press releases and what's being said in the news, because it is so confusing. And so I guess the other questions that I would like to know is, what, what are mandates? We've talked about mandates. What are things that we cannot negotiate, that we are under state control over? And what is within our discretion? Yesterday, there was an article published and circulated to all of us where the PDE said that these are the guidelines. They are just guidelines, recommendations, they're not mandates. And this is the message that's being, that's being repeated and, and it can't be digested. So I'd just like to know, what is it that we are required to do? What are the restrictions that are placed on us by Harrisburg? And what is within our discretion? And I'll just close by saying that whatever is within our discretion, I believe the time is now to take those steps to move our kids back into school, as long as that's within our discretion. Sorry for the rant, thank you.
And the answer to your question is insubstantial. Our mandates are six feet at lunch, obviously masks. And if we hit six cases for our size school, and that's different in our elementary schools, it's two. If we hit six cases, we close now. They have changed the recommended length of closure to two to three days. Um, but when we hit six cases, we, we, we must close. They say it's a recommendation, but insubstantial, it is, it's a mandate based on the attestation form that was signed by Director Bucks and I. And, um, if we fail to do that, then they have the ability to make us go completely virtual for the remainder of the school year. That would be the, or until they're satisfied that we're going to follow the rules.
Is that the PDE that has that authority, or is it the Department of Health?
I think it's a combination.
It's joint, as well as they can take away, um, your athletics. Because if you're forced to go virtual and you're, and you're in violation of the attestation form, that's the teeth, that's in that original order. Um, and I, I haven't seen anyone enforce that because no one's been in that position yet, but that's my understanding.
Uh, currently, school districts seem to be utilizing the mentality, because athletics were allowed to continue, as long as it's not an attestation form problem. They were allowed to continue in other buildings with closures. And since most spring athletics are outside, I've seen athletics continue outside. Now, boys volleyball is going on inside, so that would be impacted. But the athletics outside would continue now, unless it's an attestation form violation, and then at that point, yeah, at that point, it's all fair game.
And the big issue there is, is lunches, correct? I mean, that, that's where.
I, I mean, that, that's an obstacle. Um, we, we think we have that problem solved. I think the bigger issue is the floating in and out of closure. Um, yeah, from an operational standpoint, it's frustrating. It's frustrating to, to monitor the cases like that, to have to close down for two to three days, depending, especially depending upon when the days are. Now, Brooke and I were talking, have an, an idea that might make it a little better for us, which I'll, I can get into next week, but the, uh, um, by, just by tweaking the day of the asynchronous can help with some of that. Um, I think schools are utilizing that. Uh, but it's, it's, it's tough. Uh, you know, Palmyra closed the week before Easter, Cedar Crest Middle School closed, Lebanon closed, Dairy Township closed, Topahawkun closed. Um, and, and I know Elko Middle School was one away, and, and at one point we were one away. So it's the closures, because I will, I will admit that we are, our saving grace in some cases is that some hybrid kids aren't here two, 48 hours before their symptoms occur because they're not here every day. So they don't count against us. And so therefore, that, that helps with that six case count. Um, you know, that, that's my biggest frustration as a superintendent, is that you could hit that six cases rather quickly and, and then you're forced, it's like a snow day almost where you're turning around on a diamond. I mean, that, that's, that's really, the lunches compared to the, the closures, potential closures is more of a big deal to me.
Yeah, the one, the one challenge I have with not trying to move forward and waiting to get into moderate is, we don't control that. You know, it is, it's a countywide thing. We, we could be at zero up here. Um, and because of the county, our kids are being impacted, which is, is why, uh, another reason I think w- we need to move towards that, because if we don't, you know, we, we're, we could sit here in this same mode for, for a long time. I, I don't know how long.
Well, I must admit, in moderate, i- i- the decision's way simpler, in my opinion.
Understood, we just can't control that. I mean, we, we just, we don't. Uh, those numbers are, right? I mean, it's driven by the county, we can't isolate our zip codes and say, we're in good shape. There's, there's no way to do that. And, um, you know, the reality is more of the population is not here, um, and more of those numbers are, are there. And, um, so I, you know, by design, we're going to be lower, but, but we are going to, we have to follow that, we have to follow those numbers.
And this is the last point I'll make. Um, you talk about closing two or three days, but that student who's coming here 72 days this year already missed 108. You know, what's, you know, for the last 45 days of the year, they might, say we closed down twice, who knows how many days we're going to close down? That's four days. You know, they already, they already missed, um, 108 of their days. To me, if we close down, it doesn't work out, we have to close, at least we try to get them back.
I'll echo Director Dom's, um, you know, thoughts on the fact that you're, you know, the administration and, um, Superintendent Messinger, you, you're in a difficult position. I, I, you know, I, I wouldn't want to be sitting in your position. You, it's a tough one, it's a tough one to win. I don't want to, uh, jam something down, the administration, the teachers, et cetera. Um, I do feel like we have to move this way though, um, because I'm afraid if, i- if we just wait, we're going to just be waiting. Um, and, and, and I do fear what next year looks like if we've, if we've not made it back and parents are wondering, well, you know, will they get back next year or will they not? Um, you know, the, I, I think it's a big risk.
I guess I'll chime in. Um, yeah, I'm the old guy on the board here, so I kind of give a different perspective of life. Um, first of all, I'd like to echo what everybody said here, and Gary especially, you know, that, um, there's, there's two sides to this story, and both sides have some very compelling arguments of, of why we would want to do, do this. Um, I, I'm more familiar with elementary, we've been full-time all year, 100% of the kids. So I, I don't see the issues with the middle school and the high school, only that I can imagine, I remember when I was in high school, you know, changing classes and, and lunchtime were, you know, were times where there were things. But, you know, that's where as a board member, you know, I can take my expertise, not expertise, but my understanding of, of education in, in the elementary, but I, I'm not going to pretend to sit here and say, okay, I know what goes on in a, in a high school and what's the best, uh, course of action. Um, so my main point is that, and I think everyone has kind of said that to some degree, um, but I'll just echo it again, is that we hired Gary, um, and it's, time flies, I don't even know, it was a year and a half, two years, something like that, you know? But when we hired him, the one thing that I knew about him from just knowing of Gary for, for years, is that he'd always have our kids in mind, um, he'd always look out for our best interests as a district, he'd do the right thing, he'd make a hard decision. Um, but then also, he was looking to make sure that, that our students were, uh, were learning. Uh, and the, the school he taught or was principal before, um, the record there really was impressive as far as, you know, his concern for student achievement and, and their growth. Um, and that he would monitor those things, he's begun monitoring. So I think we were very capable hands, uh, we put our district in very capable hands to make this decision. And I would be very, very reluctant as a board member, extremely reluctant. Um, we can give him our opinions, but to me, um, this is unfortunately, I think it's his call, Gary's call, because he knows the district, he knows the teachers, he knows the students, he knows, he knows everything that he needs to know to make the informed decision that we can give him our opinions on, but I still think it's, it's really his, his decision. And I said it's, it, there's arguments on both sides, and I think that the arguments that have been placed, that, you know, the, the, you know, children's health, uh, mental health, et cetera, uh, weigh heavy on that. Um, but there are so, also some unknowns that have not been discussed, uh, this evening. Um, this, the, the, the virulent, or whatever they call that fancy term, you know, this, the, the, the new strain of this virus is attacking the younger population. Um, I just saw a thing from, like, I think it was Michigan, that, you know, people under 45, the, the hospitalization rates were up like 40-some, 50%, it was like something crazy. And then ones that are under 25 were up 30%. So it's not just that, you know, um, we're still dealing with the same exact virus. Uh, we're seeing a second surge, or a fourth surge, rather. So, you know, those are all things, again, I'm just trying to balance this out as far as thinking both, both sides. Um, we're in the final stretch of, uh, the year, we've got two months. Um, and so I think that whatever we decide, if it's four days and we have, uh, you know, a middle day for, for us to clean and, and things, or, um, those are all things that, um, for me, I, I sleep well at night knowing that Gary's going to, you know, make a call, might not be the, the call I, I like, it might be the one, but I know that it's done from a good place i- in his thinking. It's not, okay, I'm going to do this or that with, with some kind of an agenda, this is totally, um, having our school district in mind. So I think I've rambled long enough, but you get my, get my idea. Thank you.
Well, I didn't hire Dr. Messinger. Uh, I find it, um, I'll, I'll say I'm a more dispassionate person than a lot of people. Uh, it's so easy for me to push an agenda that somebody else has to run. And Dr. Messinger, you're the one that has to deal with all the stuff, all the actual tangible things. And so I would be more than happy to yield with what you think is safest and best for the students. And I hate saying that because then it kind of puts you... And I hate saying that because then it kind of puts you in the crosshairs of the community. But the truth is, you know more than anyone else what the genuine risks are. You know more than anyone else what the most capable position for the teachers are to be. Because if you have to keep shutting down, I can only imagine how hard it is to plan if you know that I can shut down the very next day. And so I would be more than happy to support you in whatever decision you and the administration feel is best.
I'm not sleeping quite as well as you are, Director Gray.
Not everybody's spoken, but I just want to add one little quick thing, it's not a caveat type of thing. And that is that one thing I've learned this year after many years in, in, in education is the word pivoting. We are told, and I'm sure every teacher in the Commonwealth and in the country is told, you have to be ready to pivot from regular classroom to virtual within an hour. You have to have, everything is set up. Google, you know, it's like, the pivoting is the new, you know, the new term for the year. It's, you have to be able to do that. So, and that's why I know that we're, with our teachers, we're in very good hands because, you know, they know how to do that. Thanks.
I'd love to see us, you know, be back in person. I know we all would. The impact of human, human interaction is, you know, there's just no substitute for it. And so I think that if, if we can do that, I think that would be the best option. I don't know that anybody disagrees with that. And, and the impact and truancy and, and education and the, what our kids are leaving here with, will it be equivalent to what we hope for? You know, I, I mean, those are all valid concerns. You know, I, I, concerns that I have, probably those concerns of, for our kids outweigh my concerns for, for virus impact, but that may be my lack of knowledge in that area. So, you know, I can't, you know, I can't say what we should or shouldn't do at this point. I mean, my, my desire would be for us to go back and be more in person, only because I think human interaction is necessary. I do think that families should still have options. You know, I don't hear anybody saying that isn't the case. You know, but, but I think that, that, that group that is not getting human interaction in the days that they're not getting human interaction that Director Klein alluded to, I think is, is greatly impacting our kids. And, and so I absolutely do trust our administration. I trust you, Gary. I know that you have our best interest in mind and, and the best interest of the district, but that's a hard place for you to be, for sure. And, you know, I certainly don't want you to carry that weight alone and, and we are a team here. So, you know, I want to be able to support what is, you know, what is not only best for the district, but what is best for us as a, as a team here, to be able to come together and, and make that decision. But, you know, we're in, you know, times of, you know, where that is, that is not a clear pathway. I wish it was, you know, you know? So I don't know if that, that gives me a, a nice spot right there in the middle of the fence or, or what, but that's kind of where I'm at because I, I really, I don't know what, I don't know, I know the right decision is to make sure that kids have better human interaction, but how we get there safely, you know, I don't want to be the one to make that decision and I don't want you to make it alone either. So that's where I'm at.
I do have just follow-up, but I would defer to Dr. Bucks if you wanted, you're the only one that hasn't spoken yet. Okay. So I would like to just clarify that I am not prepared to put a motion on the table to make a decision that supersedes the administration. I know that I spoke passionately. I feel those things passionately. I am not a dispassioned person in this and I, I confess that and acknowledge that. I am not prepared to put a motion on the table that would supersede the authority of the administration. I also trust the administration. I trust each and every board member here. I know that to the degree that I have thought about this, you all have thought about it too. And so it is, it is a pleasure for me to be a part of this team and I'm not, I'm not suggesting or proposing that, that I'm going to step out and force the hand. I just wanted to make sure that, that, that position was known and that I do see it as an option, not today. But at some point, I do believe that that could be an option. I, I think we could talk a lot about the statistics and I appreciate Director Gray's input on that as well. It does make sense that as the older population gets vaccinated and is not infected, that the percentages of hospitalizations of the younger populations would be higher. I'm not speaking on authority of that, but I have done some reading into that as well. I recognize that there are risks. As I see it, though, and as I read it, the risks to students of 18 and below continue to be, even with the variations, extraordinarily low, statistically very, very low. And I would like for us to, to the degree that we have that discretion, to make decisions that, that move in acknowledgement of those factors and move us towards getting our kids to school and getting on with their lives to the degree that we can. Thanks.
One last comment and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Bucks for some final comments, I think. So again, I, I don't want to, as, as Director Nam said, you know, dictate something that we should do. What I will say is, I think as a board, we, we need to keep this thing moving and that doesn't mean let's wait till even the next meeting, let's wait till next month, that it's active, because this is, this is critical to our kids, to our district as a whole, moving forward. And I think, you know, Dr. Messinger, you, you've been working, I know behind the scenes, you've talked about even getting some more concrete data from parents. You know, we put out a survey a week or so ago, that was some good data, but, but it was, you know, it was summary data. You know, it doesn't give us real, you know, actionable data that we can go then and put a real plan together. But I think you, you probably have some ideas of how, how do I figure out if, you know, the Marlowes want to come back to school and would they come back to school? You know, really, would they do it? You know, I think moving, you know, forward with a, a step like that would, would help everyone plan, be intentional about the next step. And, and I just think we've, we've got to keep it in front of us and, and not, you know, not sit in the opinion we have today. My opinion could change tomorrow. It, it really could. Today, I feel like we should move forward. We should put every plan in place we can to, to get them back. We've got to be active on this thing and just, and, and keep it, keep it moving, not stop talking about it for a day. I'm done.
I think I'd like to start by just thanking everybody for their transparency and professional discussion. I think for what I could agree and totally relate to, something that each and every person here has said. As Director Gray mentioned, it's very, I feel personally, it's very easy to see both sides of the situation. How our kids are, are suffering. This has been a long, hard year for our kids, for our staff, for our admin, I think for everybody, if we're, if we're being honest, yes. And parents, there's no doubt about that, that this has been hard. But I want to kind of take a step back and first recognize that a year ago, when we shut down very abruptly, we relied on Dr. Messinger and his team to develop a plan on the fly, when no other schools had plans, basically. There was no blueprint for how to develop a plan. We were one of the first schools that were having some type of instruction with our kids at home. And we trusted in that team to keep us moving forward against all odds. And I continue to trust in the team that they will keep education at the forefront while also maintaining and balancing that with safety. I have no doubt in my mind that our kids are resilient, that they will catch up. We are, even in the midst of this, there's a lot of focus being put on curriculum moving forward. I don't think our kids are going to be left in the dust. Are, are they, is it difficult for them now? Absolutely. But I have seen many students catch up when they have not had the best breaks in life. If they have that will, they can do it. And all we need to do here at Northern Lebanon is, once things get back to normal, we give them those opportunities and they will take advantage of that. Students that won't be at Northern Lebanon next year, there will be opportunities for them if they choose to, to take advantage of them. I have no doubt about that. So our students will catch up. That doesn't take away from the trauma, from the difficulty of the day to day. I recognize that. But I do believe that if we put our minds to it, we're not going to suffer our whole lives because of one year. Many other generations have lived through pandemics and really awful events and we will make it too. I don't want to be having this conversation in fall. I want to be pretty much through, if not completely through COVID. My concern, I, I know there has been a lot of talk about how our kids are not at risk for hospitalization, our kids are not dying, not much from COVID. Yes, that is true, but as Dr. Gray mentioned, the variant B.1.1.7 is really on the rise. New data has shown that it is more highly contagious in kids and more pathogenic in kids. This is not a static situation. This is a constantly mutating virus. The rules two months ago are different than the rules now. The virus two months ago is different than the virus now. We, we can't paint with a wide paintbrush. We also need to recognize, whether we agree or not, the people in Harrisburg are trained to look at this from a community and a population standpoint, to get us through this as fast and as effective as we can, to get the most people through it as we can, to prevent the most people from dying. A lot of us don't agree with a lot of the decisions that have been made, but they are the ones most qualified and most trained and who have studied the most types of history examples like this that there are. Before this, how many pandemics have most school boards heard of or studied? Probably not so many. But the people in Harrisburg are making the best decisions, looking at the most current data to try to get us through this. And so I think when our administration respects those recommendations and works with those recommendations while also recognizing our current level in this, I, I, we have to, I believe that we have to respect that decision. We're almost to a point where things are going to get normal. And the scariest thing in my mind is if we think we're out of the woods already and think, well, we're not going to get infected that bad. If I get infected, I'm not going to die. Every time that virus replicates in an individual, we have that risk of it mutating in such a way that the vaccines are not effective. If that happens, we are back in March 2020. I don't want to go to that place. I think it's very important that we still recognize the severity of the situation. We're almost there. Things are slowly getting better, but we can't go on acting like we're out of the woods already when we are not. This virus is still very real. It's still in many ways like a living organism, mutating, changing, adapting to what we do. And it's survival of the fittest. The one that infects the best, the one oftentimes that is most pathogenic, that spreads the best, is the one that will survive. In a sense, viruses aren't really alive, but they're the ones that will be spread and that will become predominant. And right now, kids are not getting severely sick. We hope that continues. But if we move too quickly to send kids back, to keep them closer while this variant is on the rise, we increase our chances of having this conversation further down the road. I think that concludes. Oh, one, I have one other thing to comment. This is a big discussion. It's an important discussion, but I think we have to take into account that there are eight weeks left in this year. We're almost through. Eight weeks. And if we're bringing, if we're talking about bringing kids back for an additional two days each week, we're actually talking about 16 days for each kid, an additional 16 days in the school year. I believe that concludes my remarks.
Well, thank you, everybody. I appreciate that. I'll call Director Erdman too and give him a chance to talk. I, I mean, I think the one thing that is clear to me is that we need to continue offering options. That general survey, you know, one of the things I was really trying to pinpoint was what students have a desire to remain in a hybrid model or a completely virtual model. And got some good feedback that those models are important to people still. And there's a lot of folks that, yes, would, would like to, to get here more frequently. But then there's also a group of, of folks that, that do want to stay in those models and I don't think we can remove those models at this point. So that, that part is clear. I'm going to actually ask for about 48 hours. I know we want to continue to move forward. Would like to have 48 hours to have some internal discussions and, and then be back in touch with the board via email or phone calls Thursday. And, and then we obviously have a meeting next week too, that, that we'll have an opportunity to, to talk further. So, but I did have a couple of things that popped in my head as we were discussing and, and would like to talk to other admin about that. And then I'll be back in touch. So, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions on that question? Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.